All right, City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming, Alderman Fisk, Alderman Berthwaite, Alderman Wynn, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Sufferton.
Here.
Alderman Ravel. We have a quorum.
All right, great, thank you, City Clerk, and thank you, everybody, for being here on the Monday, April 8, 2019, Evanston City Council meeting. We have everybody present. Alderman Wynn is out for a family health issue, and Alderman Fleming is out of town and couldn't be here tonight. But we do have a quorum, and the first thing I'd like to do, we haven't met as a city council in a couple of weeks, we had some really positive news that came out, and it was in Evanston Now and the Roundtable and the Daily Northwestern and others around here, about our 2018 Economic Development Report. And I know we got lots of folks looking at the Valley folks here for some good news about things they're doing in the community, and our city staff and everybody up here at this dais works really, really hard to make sure that we continue to be sort of a thriving, vibrant community. And Paul Zelmasak, who's our Director of Economic Development here, along with others in the city, issued the report, and I just want to go over some highlights of this because I think it's really, really telling and positive for the hard work everybody's done here. In 2018, we had more than 40 new businesses that opened in Evanston, including 14 new food establishments, and I know we all like food. The city received $23 million in sales, hotel, liquor, and amusement taxes in 2018, and that was an 8% increase over 2017. Evanston's unemployment rate increased 3.3 percent, or averaged 3.3 percent in 2018. That's the lowest it's been in decades and lower than the United States, than the state of Illinois and the Chicago region. So people clearly want to do business here. Folks here, many of them are employed, all good signs. And then lastly, our office vacancy rate, according to CoStar, which monitors this, ended last year at less than 5%, the lowest of the suburban communities and competitive with Chicago's most in-demand neighborhoods, at approximately 4%. Evanston's retail vacancy rate is at a 10% low. So this is all really, really, really good news for our city. You know, the first thing that I asked when I saw this report, and I just want to share it with folks, is, great, if our sales tax and liquor tax and hotel tax and amusement tax is up 8%, why do we have a deficit last year? Now, we have lots of different revenue sources that power the city, but in my State of the City address, I talked about the changing nature of taxes and that we've got a tax system for the old economy, not necessarily the new economy. Some of those things you'll see, where we had decreases in revenue last year, and our numbers are pretty much in for 2018, building permit revenue was down considerably, we knew that was going to be down, Northwestern's made big investments, the telecommunications tax, and when I talk about a changing economy, that's a tax where you're seeing changes. People no longer are carrying landlines, those landlines are taxed, and the city derives revenue from that. You know, that tax was down. Vehicle licensing, that tax was down, and then the athletic contest tax was down. And so you might say, well, why was that? Northwestern had a great football schedule last year, and they had a lot of attendees at those games. That's positive for the amusement tax, but Northwestern basketball last year in 2018 played out in Rosemont, so the city didn't collect that tax. So that's just some of the rationale for why we still ended up with a deficit, but I think really positive indicators here to see our sales, hotel, liquor, and amusement tax go up. So I applaud everybody in this room and everybody up here who has been working hard to make sure that there's a focus on economic development. I have two announcements or proclamations, I'm not going to read them today, we've got a lot on the agenda, but I did want to note that today, or this month of April 2019, is National Fair Housing Month. We have no tolerance for any kind of discrimination here in Evanston, it's a federal law, everything else. We provide support for folks if they think that that has been the case, the city will support you. So National Fair Housing Month, and it is also National Volunteer Week coming up, which is April 7th to 13th. There's lots of organizations here in Evanston that are planning events for National Volunteer Week. So thank you for everybody who not only volunteers on that week, but throughout the year. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor members of the council, good evening. First of all, the Administration of Public Works Committee met earlier this evening, and the committee asked that I make an announcement prior to public comment, and that is on item A26, is a proposed change to the city's debt policy, and the committee has recommended something different than what is on the agenda. They are recommending to the full city council to be considered later this evening, the number be raised only $2 million to $152 million from $160 million. So the item that was recommended to the full council, which will be considered in a few minutes on item A26, is a number of 152,000 instead of the proposed 160,000. Next, several items on the agenda regarding the Robert Crown Center. One of those is a recognition of Valley Produce for a donation of $250,000 toward the project. Mr. Mayor, I believe there are representatives here from Valley Produce who would like to make a presentation.
Terrific, terrific. Well, come on up, and I'll come on down there as well.
Good evening, my name is Frank Recco. On behalf of Valley Produce Fresh Market of Evanston, we're very excited to make this contribution to the re-envisioning of the Robert Crown Community Center facilities. Four and a half years ago, Carmen, my brother-in-law, family member, owner of the store, along with his dedicated staff, really began working very hard to establish a true neighborhood market for Evanston, and we couldn't be more proud of the town and of the work that they've done. And finally, we consider it a privilege to play a small part in such a prodigious and much-needed development in Evanston.
Thank you.
that check in to the Assistant City Manager. All right, anything else, City Manager?
Yes, one other item. As you are all aware, Cook County is going through a process of property tax, property value reassessment, and a lot of questions have been raised as to what does this mean for individual property owners. Hitesh Desai, our Chief Financial Officer is here, and I asked Hitesh what I thought was a simple question, and I said, "Hitesh, is there not a sort of a back-of-the-envelope calculation that people can make, or a benchmark threshold if the property values go up a certain amount? What does that mean for the taxes?" As I think the council is aware, the city taxes a dollar amount, and that dollar amount is then applied to the assessed valuation of the entire community. So, Hitesh, simple question, people have received their property reassessments, the property values have changed, what does that mean for people's taxes?
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, members of the council. It's a very good question, and I know that we have got a lot of questions. Mitzi Gibbs, the person who, you know, helping people with the appeals, she's like quite busy with those things. And that's where I like looked, kind of prepared a worksheet that, okay, if you've got the assessment increase of 10%, 20%, 50%, or even more than that, what would be the impact on the tax? And one thing which we can say with certainty that it won't be the same percentage increase in your tax bill as is the increase in your assessment. And so that's why, based on some of the assumptions, you know, I like calculated, we randomly took some five properties, see if you can read it, one on Ashland Avenue, one on Sherman, one on the Payne, Lakeside, and the one on the Milburn, yeah. And the numbers on the top you see are the current, like, 2017 assessment numbers, and what are their taxes right now, you know? And then, let's see, at the bottom, I have the proposed assessed value in the column B at the bottom, and then in the column C, it says increase in assessment, 62%, 71%, 84%, 16%, 47. Now, these are really alarming numbers, yeah. That's the kind of increase in the assessment value. And then I put, the next to it is a multiplier or equalizer, which we get from the Illinois Department of Revenue for the Cook County. I used the tentative number for 2018, which is 2.8366, and I said, okay, what would be the equalized assessed value? So we got the numbers in the column E. And then the tax rate, that comes to 5.6. How did I get to 5.6? It's like one of those worksheets next to it, it's under the EAV. So this is what happened, like, you see that in column C, the current numbers, and the column D is the estimated numbers. So right now, city of Evanston levy is around 48 million, including GA, General Assistance and Library. And our equalized assessed value is 2.7 billion, 2017 number, '18 not finalized yet, and based on the numbers they came out with, the assessed values, and I used the 2018 equalizer, our EAV would be around 4.4 billion, as you see in the column D. And assuming that we keep the same levy and all other taxing agencies, school districts and others, keep the same levy, which is at $246 million under the total levy, row 12, the rate, that levy compared to the revised EAV of 4.4 billion would equate to 5.6% versus our current rate of over 9%. So what it translates into, again, Erica, can you please, yeah, kind of go back to the tax impact worksheet? So if you come back to the, yeah, column E here at the bottom, the revised EAV, you see that would be around 316, 439,000 and all that, and then I applied the tax rate of 5.6%. So estimated taxes came out at, you see the numbers in column G, and the change is in the H, which is more important. First, to a property, you see there's nominal increase or decrease, and then even some of them are the big decrease, you know? So the only one property on Payne Street, based on their numbers, because their assessment has gone up by 84%, their taxes went up by 9% only. So, yes, obviously, this is based on a couple of assumptions, which is, city would keep the tax levy same, all other taxing agencies would keep the, the equalizer, yeah, how the equalizer is affected, right now, we are keeping it at 2.833, which is 2018 number. So, yeah, one thing which we'd like to, yeah, kind of share, that I know people have like 30, 40, 50% change in the assessment, increase in the assessment, but doesn't necessarily translate into the same tax increase.
So again, this is an inexact science, the equalizer number, until that is known, and the county is not going to produce that number for a while.
For a while, yes.
That really is the missing piece, but we wanted to try to demonstrate this evening that there is not a direct correlation between the percentage of the assessed valuation change and the change in what people would pay in property tax.
Right.
So, again, the appeal period is through next Monday, the 15th. Mitzi Gibbs, who has done an astonishing job on our staff, taking over the responsibility of the former Evanston Township Assessor's Office, has seen many, many Evanston taxpayers. Cook County Commissioner Larry Sufferton's office has also done tremendous work, helping folks. There's information available on the websites, people can still reach out, I would imagine, to Commissioner Sufferton's office as needed, but the deadline is next Monday. We will continue to keep the council apprised of information that we receive from the Cook County Assessor's Office, they have genuinely been as helpful as they can, but again, until we know what that equalizer number is, we will not have precise numbers.
Right, and again, this is based on the assumption that taxing levy, the dollars remain the same overall.
Right, and that the assessment, the EAV, as Hitesh said, had gone up, I think, Erica, you go back to the next tab, that is--
4.4 billion, yeah.
4.4 billion.
Based on the current numbers, but that's subject to all the appeals and all that, so that might come down.
And that's exactly the point I wanted to make, that that is not a fixed final number itself.
Absolutely.
People will certainly go through the appeals process, and we will see that number change. So, Mr. Mayor members of the council, hopefully this was helpful. I know that Mr. Desai is going to be at the second ward meeting coming up on Thursday evening, and will, I think, give a similar, if not exact, presentation there, but will be available to answer questions, and again, we'll keep everyone posted as this progresses.
Okay.
And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hitesh. City Clerk, do you have any announcements?
Yes, I apologize, I have two announcements. One is from a member of the public who wants to let folks know about a Save Our Youth and Save Family Focus event that is happening Wednesday, April 17, at 5:00 p.m. There'll be a unity walk, starting at Simpson and Dodge and proceeding to Church and Dodge, and folks will stop at CNW for ice cream, and you can reach out to Nico Ross or Joanne Avery, I believe at Foster, at Foster?
Fleetwood.
Fleetwood, I apologize.
Family Focus.
Family Focus, yes, to reach out about that event. And then next, we'll have our slideshow, if you can click, there's a, oh, is that a, perfect. So after every election, we give a post-election snapshot. Of course, we know that we had an election on April 2 here in Evanston for District 65, District 202, Oats and Community College School Board, Ridgeville Park District, as well as the Lighthouse Park District, which I'm sure most of us aren't aware of, the Lighthouse Park District. So every election, we use, we tend to use artwork to try to, you know, brighten up the election, encourage folks to vote. That's our new piece of art for this election cycle. We had 52,645 registered voters in the city, that is up roughly 500 voters from our last election, so not a huge increase in voter turnout. Typically, we continue to do our two-way texting campaign, as well as social media outreach and door-knocking. We focused in the fifth ward again with door-knocking, but text, our text campaign was to 8,000 voters who traditionally do not turn out in school board elections. One of the things that we learned from our text campaign is, a lot of folks just told us that they were not going to vote in this election, and one of the common reasons that we got for folks not voting was that they don't have kids in the school district, and, you know, there's only so much we can do to explain to folks that whether you have kids in the district or not, it is important to participate in these elections, and we'll have a bit more information about that as we go forward. What's going on with that page there? There's a blank page for some reason, and that page was our page, I don't know why it's showing up blank there, but the page is regarding our, we set up a display downstairs to encourage folks to come vote and allow their children to participate in a fun and engaging poll. Why is that? I think something, there you go. Something's going on with a few of the slides, there are two that are missing. So early voting by suburban location. Evanston in past election, in the last few elections, has been a leader in early voting site utilization. This election did not, it did not pan out that way, although our early voter turnout was nearly on par with some of our previous elections, as you can see here. One of the differences between Evanston and some of the other municipalities that had higher early voter, vote site utilization was that they had contested aldermanic or trustee elections as well, and we did not. So this is the historic voter turnout for the last few elections. As you can see, voter turnout was slightly down at 21% in 2011, and we can see that it was a high of 26% in school board elections. Here's a turnout comparison with number of comparable municipalities. What we did notice is that there's been a steep decrease in voter turnout across municipalities, especially in Oak Park and New Trier, and they also are on a cycle where they have aldermanic and trustee elections at this time. Turnout by ward, one of the things that we noticed here was that the fifth ward did not have the lowest turnout this election, so we were proud about that. The ninth ward had the highest turnout and the largest increase in voter participation, and the first ward also had, I'm sorry, the fourth ward also had an increase in voter participation in this election. The results, District 65 was pick three, it was an uncontested race, so all of the candidates will move on to serve on the District 65 School Board. In District 202, there are three candidates, Monique Parsons, Ms. Stephanie Tedder, I'm sorry, Tedder, does anybody know to pronounce her last name? No, on the board, no, Tedder, and then as well as Elizabeth Rowick, those were the three winners. The Selene Palmer did not move on to serve on the District 202 School Board. Oats and Community College School Board, all of the winners were from Evanston. The winners are Wendy Yanow, Gail Bush, and Mary Lynn Toussaint. Michelle Hayes is another Evanston resident who came in a very close fourth place for three seats. The Ridgeville Park District is a very interesting race. There are, it's, again, pick three, there are four folks running. There is a tie between Rob Beatty and Dan Coyne, who received, as of this morning, the vote count was 961 votes apiece, and the way that is determined, and our great electoral system, is by coin toss. So on April 15, once all of the mail-in ballots and provisional ballots have been tallied, if there is no winner, then Mr. Coyne and Rob Beatty will go down to the county clerk's office, choose heads or tails, and whoever wins the coin flip will go on to serve on the board. That is per the Illinois Code. Ridgeville, if you don't know, has an operating budget of about a half, half a million dollars. Then we have the Lighthouse Park District, which was choosing between one, choosing one of the two candidates, and Ms. Catherine Widener was the winner there. The Lighthouse Park District has an annual budget of about $135,000, if you're unaware of that, and I did not move on on this slide. There's a referendum for the Lighthouse Park District Commissioners, and it was to decrease the number of members on the board. That referendum overwhelmingly passed. So what we learned, as I mentioned in our text campaign, we learned that residents, many residents, did not feel inclined to participate because of not having kids in the district or not understanding the races. So one of the things that we see is important moving forward is that we, I think it's important for the city council to put binding referenda on the ballot during school board elections that are meaningful to folks, and by doing that, I think we can increase voter participation. Some of the things that we got back from folks is that if they're, one term in particular, you might be familiar with this, someone said if there's a millage on the ballot, I think that's a term from Massachusetts, if there's a millage on the ballot, that she would have happily come out to vote, and so we should put referenda that are meaningful to folks on these off-year elections, so we encourage wider participation. The clerk's office will also change our strategy to work with nonprofit groups, particularly PTAs and other school-related groups in off-year school board elections, to make sure that we are keeping our voter turnout up, as well as hopefully having contested races across the board. That is the end of our presentation.
All right, well, thank you, Clerk Reed, for that in-depth review, and it's nice for all of those that went to the ballot box to actually see who won, and particularly with the Lighthouse referendum, which doesn't get much press, and how that turned out to reduce the size of the board. We'll leave for another day a whole debate about whether you put key referendum on and off your election or not, you know, there's a lot of different ways to look at that and think about that. Fact is, not many people come out to vote, and so do you want such an important thing on an election where historically not that many people come out to vote? So that's lots to discuss and debate on that another time. We're going to move now to public comment. The council, if you were at the last Rules Committee meeting, you know, is talking about how we make sure that, you know, we move through these agendas, you know, as quickly as possible, making sure we're true to the 45 minutes that we set aside for public comments. We're looking at other things besides just public comment, as well as our committee meetings and so forth, and as you saw today, we moved through the committee meetings pretty quickly. I always talk about the 45 minutes, and that we divide the number of people by 45 minutes. I just want to share with everybody what the actual rule is of the city council, so everybody's aware. The way the rule is stated, it says, "If there are more than five speakers, a period of 45 minutes shall be provided for all comment, and no individual should speak longer than three minutes." The mayor will allocate the time among the speakers to ensure that public comment does not exceed 45 minutes. It then says, "The business of the city council shall commence 45 minutes after the beginning of public comment." So what, tonight, we've got 30 people that have signed up for public comment. Taking the 30 people, dividing it by 45 minutes, that means everybody has a maximum of a minute 30 to give your remarks. What I'm going to ask tonight is, I'm going to ask our city manager if he'll just set a clock, once the first speaker starts, Wally, to just clock it for 45 minutes, and then I'm going to ask Clerk Reed, as he always does, just to time the speakers and, you know, and set it for a minute 15, and then if it buzzes, please know that you got to wrap it up in the next, you know, 15 seconds. We just need to be respectful of everybody that wants to comment here, as I always say, the people, the elected officials, want to hear what you have to say, and we want to move through this quickly, and I want to make sure that folks up here have time to have a thorough discussion and debate on the issues. So with that, we're going to move to public, to public comment. The first, and I'll rattle them off in threes, three speakers we've got, we've got Marsha Kerr, Carl Klein, and then Michelle Sweeney. Excuse me, I'm told we don't have that, so disregard that for a second, I'm looking at a--
Let me swipe all the way to--
Here, Devon, let me, let me just--
Hello?
Devon, this is what I did, oh, let's see.
Hello?
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, all right, we got the right list, so we're not calling last week's. We've got Mike Vasilko, Darlene Cannon, and then Tricia Conley. So if you want to just come up, and then you can stand behind the others at the wall back there, and we'll, we'll set it for a, again, we're going to set it for a minute 15. If you hear it go off, just realize that we need to wrap up in about 15 seconds, so welcome. Here we go.
Mike Vasilko is going to, he was able to attend, and he wants to speak by phone, so Mike is here to deliver public comment now.
Okay.
Thank you. This is Mike. Thank you for taking my call long distance. I appreciate that very much. I also want to apologize for the increasing tone between the growing number of concerned citizens, the city, and the friends of Robert Crown. We're very concerned about the rising debt and taxes in Evanston. It is not sustainable. We're trying, as a group, seemingly sometimes in a vacuum, to help raise awareness and offer solutions. I'm speaking tonight on item 827 primarily, which is, we're asking for the bond sale to be held or canceled. We're also asking for the, a group to be scheduled, a meeting to be scheduled, to talk about memorandum of understanding and the letters of intent. You know, building the community center for $59 million, selling $85 million of steady bonds last year, or proposing to sell without a referendum. The city and its citizens do not have this kind of money. The bonds should have been revenue bonds, not general obligation bonds. Revenue bonds would have put the burden of generating enough revenue to pay for the debt on the users of the building, especially the large private users. General obligation bonds become the burden of the taxpayers of Evanston. We've offered suggestions before to reduce the cost of Robert Crown, and we'd like to see some of those implemented. You had that list from me in previous conversations.
Thank--
I offer other suggestions in the past.
Thank you, Mike.
It's time is running out to take advantage of them. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you taking this call.
You bet, thank, thank you, Mike. Darlene Cannon, Tricia Conley, and then Meg Welsh.
Good evening, council, Mayor Hagerty. Good evening, council, Mayor Hagerty, Devon. Speaking in regards to Robert Crown, if Northwestern and Beacon Academy want the state-of-the-art ice rink, that they, they should offer to pay the cost of the second bond installment, and not push it off on the backs of this city's low-income marginalized residents, which are usually people of color. This bond could ultimately force them out of Evanston. The Poor People's Campaign is about bringing moral renewal back to this country. It is a campaign for economic and social justice. The right to affordable housing for homeowners and renters alike should be a part of our moral compass. I'm asking that the council have a moral renewal and vote in the best interest of, of all the Evanston residents and not a select few. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Darlene. Trish Conley, Meg Welsh, Mary Rosinski.
Good evening, council, and city manager and city clerk. Tonight, I'm asking each one of you on the City Council, including the mayor, city manager, and city clerk, to state whether or not you have a financial and/or personal interest with any of the private entities who are preparing letters of intent for Robert Crown Center. Any such interest should be disclosed and acknowledged to the public. If this is the case for any one of you, you should recuse yourself from all Robert Crown Community Center matters in voting. The Library and Community Center is a noble effort, however, the weight in cost the community is expected to bear for the rest of the project is unsustainable. Let's remind ourselves where we were in January, which included furloughing employees, cutting essential services like victim, mental health, and youth services on the chopping block, just to name a few. We're counting on all of you to be financially responsible about lessening the financial burden on our community and making sure that spending goes to our most needed services and programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. Meg Welsh, Mary Rosinski, and Lenny Lampkin.
The Poor People's Campaign is a revival of Martin Luther King's 1968 Poor People's Campaign, where people came from all over the nation and encamped in Washington, D.C. to confront our elected officials about the needs of the poor. And we in the Poor People's Campaign are very concerned that these bonds, the cost of the Robert Crown Center, of which I only myself became fully aware of, the impact that it's going to have, how it could perhaps tie your hands in the future and force austerity. So there really, there is no shame in taking a step back, there's no shame in just sitting and looking at what we could do to reduce the cost, or at least have a conversation about this. So to make clear, the Poor People's Campaign is, we believe that people should not live in or die from poverty in the richest nation ever to exist. Blaming the poor and claiming that the United States or the city of Evanston does not have an abundance of resources to overcome poverty are false narratives used to perpetuate economic exploitation, exclusion, and deep inequality. Please, think about the future.
Thank you, Meg. Mary Rosinski, and then Lenny Lampkin, and then Claire Kelly.
Hi, thank you. What I'm asking for is, I'm asking for full financial disclosure on this whole $54 million project. There, I've been FOIA-ing the city over the last couple months, still trying to get answers as to what this money is, how does the breakdown of revenues go, what is the expense of the, what expenses are really where. I'm really concerned that this crippling $43 million debt is going to hinder our worthy projects that may come up, because it's going to be up to like $3 million a year that we have to fund it. And that $3 million could go to a lot of other projects. Maybe a million dollars for the Rec Center would have been a better thought process. Maybe getting funding ahead of time, maybe figuring that out before you started, not you personally, but before construction started, because the architect got out of hand or out of, blown away. And I've heard a couple things from people saying, well, this is what the city demanded, and there's 43 meetings or 31 meetings, but I have gone through every one of those packets. And in that one packet, does it say that we don't have a funding plan, and this is going to cost us up to $3 million a year just for the Rec Center? And I just find it staggering that the city leaders were looking all around this town and decided that the highest and best use of $3 million a year was the Robert Crown Center. The library came in, they said $2.5 million, there's still $2.5 million. I've looked at ice centers around the country, and I failed to find anything other than the Blackhawks practice rink downtown, which was 56 million, or 65 million. So we're not a professional hockey team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Lenny Lampkin, Claire Kelly, Misty Whittenberg.
Good evening. I live in the Ninth Ward, as most of you already know that. I want to just read from your A27. It says, "Providing for a levying collection of a direct annual tax for the payment of the principal of an interest on said bonds." Now, when I went to the Robert Crown meeting that Alderman Wilson held, your budget director said, "Well, the money from, coming from the Friends of the Robert Crown is going to make it even." Still didn't answer my question, where is the money to pay the bonds and the interest going to come from? It's going to come from us. I am a low-income senior citizen living in this city. I can't afford any more taxes. I can't afford to pay additional fees, to feed the meters, to feed the library, to go to the beach. The money's got to come from somewhere. Last year's budget, you were going to close the fire station that's around the corner from where you're building this $53 million project? No fire station, kid gets hurt at that ice rink? We fought for that fire station. The city manager said that we're going to probably be in deficit spending for the near future, blames it on the city workers, pensions. Why are we spending $53 million that we don't have? And I'm different than the others. We need a new Robert Crown Center. It was out of date when my kids, who are now in their 30s, were skating there and playing there. But we don't need a $53 million structure.
Thank you, Lenny.
When the chimes go off, you have 15 seconds left.
All right, we got Claire Kelly, Misty Whittenberg, and Betty Esther.
I'd like to ask the same question I asked before, and I still have not received an answer regarding the city paid, city hired fundraiser. The city spent nearly a million dollars, around $800,000 for a fundraiser for Robert Crown. It's a really simple question. I FOIA-ed it, I've asked it directly to the city manager's office, I've asked it here. I'd like to know how much our fundraiser raised, how much money and how much pledges has been raised? And once we know that number, I'd like to know where that money is. To date, having asked this many, many times, nobody will answer that question. If Friends of Robert Crown, which does not even have to date yet an agreement with the city of Evanston, is claiming that they have raised $5 million, let's be clear, is that $5 million really money that was raised at taxpayer expense? And if it was, we have a right to know, and it should be in a city bank account. I'd like that question answered. I hope someone tonight will address that. There's been, it seems there's been a lot of misrepresentation. Last year, in the year 2018, on May 21st, at the council meeting, the city manager's office presented in the packet and to the public, funding that had already transpired in 2017, stating, and in the packet, that the Friends had donated $2.5 million. Later, it turned out that was not true, and they had to re, they recrafted, after we pointed it out, the chart again, to say actually no money had been donated in the year 2017. I think the misrepresentations need to stop. We need some clarity in the city as to what's going down with this, the most expensive project ever in Evanston, which is funding primarily ice rinks.
Thank you, thank you, Claire. Misty Whittenberg, Betty Esther, and Harris Miller.
Hi, Misty Whittenberg, Fifth Ward. Okay, so I think we need to stop pretending that this Crown project is for the public. Our input was not sought, it was not taken. The city issued 50 media releases, e-newsletters, and opt-in update emails, three on the groundbreaking alone. There was only one community meeting hosted by the city noticed in those releases, the only one that invited the general public. It was in February. We were told then that it was too late to address our concerns. None of those releases gave us any notice on the two debt ceiling increases to pay for the project, or the design changes increasing taxpayers' cost burden. None gave us any notice of the bond hearing to finance this project, almost entirely on debt backed by increases on our property taxes, or on cost increases at all. You won't even tell us how much debt you backed on us to fund this project. The projections you gave us entirely exclude 2016 and '17 bond debt, and 2018 and '19 Series B funding, all of which is used to fund this project, all of which is backed entirely on our property taxes. What we do know is that it's costing us much more than $54 million. Something closer to 90 million? I don't know, you won't tell us. And it's like, minus whatever private donations come in, and that's also bearing a cost. So the $500,000 from Beacon Academy, if you were to diagram that contribution on our new state-of-the-art gym floor, they're paying for the center court line. But for that, they get signage that says it's the home of the Beacon Academy Wolves. Their names and logos everywhere, their LOI does specify that the public is free to use our unclaimed spots that they don't use. I'm finishing up.
Thank you.
This doesn't make any sense. The contribution barely covers Beacon's contingencies. So let's not pretend that this has nothing to do with the fact that it appears at least one of you up there is the parent of a Beacon Academy student, a student athlete.
I need you to finish, you need to...
All right, this, I'll finish up.
Listen, you have to be respectful of other people that want to speak.
I will be respectful, but I didn't get notice to speak at the hearing, so I'm just going to take 30 seconds to wrap up from that.
You know what, if you do that...
Let's not pretend that this project is not for the very wealthiest in Evanston.
Misty, we're going to move on to the next speaker, I'm sorry.
...whose children ice skate, play hockey, and attend the private schools who get first access to these facilities. It's subsidized by our most vulnerable residents through budget and service cuts, and on increases of property taxes and fees. And she called it misrepresentation, I'm just going to say you all lied to us.
Okay, thank you. So just so everybody's clear, because of the, because of the rules and the 45 minutes, when people go over the time that we're allotting, we're going to get to the 45 minutes, and unless somebody's remarks are shorter, we're not going to have time to cover folks that are at the end of this list, okay? Unless I sort of grant that. I mean, I want to get used to this 45 minutes. So Ms. Esther, welcome.
Good evening. I'm speaking on A27 and A26. In your package, it talks about these two items, these two men, item. One is the bond, and one is the debt ceiling. And it goes back, and it references what happened in 2008. This cannot happen today and should not happen, because it is a violation, because we have not had a TFA hearing like you had in June of 25th of 2018. Because the bonds that you issued in 2018, the amount that was sold was 25 million, which left 25 million to sell. So if you need to sell something this year, you would be selling 25 million off the 2018 eight. So what you're talking about is, your language is issuing new bonds, and that's what you intend to do. So that you should not be doing, because you have not had the proper procedure, the TFA hearing and the community speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esther. Harris Miller, Carl Klein, and Tina Payton.
Good evening. With another $18 million of bonds proposed for sale for the Robert Crown Community Center project, I'm concerned about Evanston's increasing debt. As a result, the project will climb to $80 million. It is inappropriate for the city to jump to conclusions with passage of another bond sale and raising our debt ceiling from 152 million to 162 million. We ought to demand the Friends of Robert Crown to meet their promise of 17.5 million in donations rather than 5 million. Evanston should aggressively negotiate the letters of intent with private users to secure a larger fair investment while we eliminate 3.1 million in project cost contingencies and 5.6 million in soft costs. Adjust rental facility fees to increase income and continue interior projects and phases based on funding. I also encourage our grant writers to apply for education, art, and recreation grants from the state and federal agencies. I ask that the City Council provide residents with transparent answers to memorandum of understanding, letters of intent, and operation costs. This is really important, because we should also be focusing on the Foster Center Art Place. It's really important to me and to Evanston residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Harris. All right, Carl, we got Carl Klein, Tina Payton, and Rose Johnson.
If you review the census data for Evanston, you notice that while the median home values have increased, the median household income has declined. Also, it is interesting to note that while 14% of Evanston households now have a household income of over $200,000, 36% of Evanston households now have a household income of under $50,000. Close to 2/3, 63.3% of owner-occupied housing units are worth less than $500,000. 64% of Evanstonians live in multi-unit buildings. Two census tracts located in the downtown, where we have seen the recent building boom, have a rental burden of over 50%. This means that half of the household income goes to house, housing costs. These are some, some statistics. So I understand that it is common for cities to issue municipal bonds to raise capital to fund a special project. But it's key to remember that the interest owed to lenders is paid by taxes levied on the community benefiting from the particular bond-funded project. For a majority of residents who own homes worth less than $500,000, they will be paying a disproportionately higher increase in taxes in terms of income. Yes, you might say that there is a minimal increase in city taxes in your presentation included in the packet, but if you all approve the bond sale, the taxes levied on Evanstonians most likely will increase. So, serious question, are you going to be making an Evanston where everyone can stay and afford to live here, or are you going to be driving lower and middle-income families out of the city? Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Tina Payton, Rose Johnson, and Janad Rizki.
Good evening, mayor, city manager, city clerk, and city council. I'm Tina Payton of the Second Ward. Alderman Rue Simmons will probably be making this announcement, but for all of you that are unaware, they are planning on tearing down Emerson and Jackson area, and the people are going to make a presentation at the Fifth Ward meeting. Everybody needs to attend. The Affordable Housing Steering Committee is at the same time, which is unfortunate. Everybody needs to come to this meeting. You are tearing down, or the people that will be tearing down, affordable housing, including an NSP-2 project, and soon there will be no affordable housing. I believe the Affordable Housing Steering Committee is steering Evanston residents that are longtime residents out of Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Tina. Ms. Johnson, welcome, Rose, and then Janad Rizki, and Steve Vick.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have been working for almost two years with an energetic, hopeful, and determined group of people who have one awesome goal, to sustain the services provided in the Foster School Building. The building is now owned by Family Focus Inc. and is for sale at an asking price of $2.5 million. The building was sold to Bernard and Bernice Weiss Board for considerably less and donated to Family Focus Inc. The city of Evanston has continually assisted financially in the maintenance of the building, so Evanston has been invested, always. In November 2017, our group Foster Center Our Place, or F-COP, was formed and made an offer to Family Focus in November of 2018 to buy the building, the response to which was, "We received your offer and created a real estate committee to address the offer." Period. F-COP is a diverse group of 28 people, representing building tenants, residents of the Fifth Ward... I don't believe it.
Sorry, it goes quick.
...other wards. And I have, well, fortunately, I printed it for you, you may read it, I just wish everybody could hear. Maybe I'll stay till the end. Maybe I'll stay till the end of the meeting and read it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your attention. What we need to save it right now is $5 million, and we have plans from an engineer who did the work for us at a greatly reduced rate. I need three minutes.
Thank you. All right, we got Janad Rizki, Steve Vick, and Chuck Wasserberg.
Janad Rizki, in my review of the city documents over a year ago during the budget hearing, I believe there'll be a 30% to 50% property tax increase with all the mess we have here. Robert Crown probably accounts for 7% of the mess. There's so many messes here with the Law Department, the messes with all the lawsuits, the messes with Fountain Square, the messes on Howard Street tonight. We have Howard Street going on. That's another mess. And we have a mess that the city's raiding the water fund to fund things. So everyone in this room needs to know, we're headed for some real trouble and some real high tax increases, and I can assure you that's coming because the city can't cut all these services. You've already gutted the police department a bit already. They're down officers, and that's been done. So all these things are coming, and you're going to, you know, you will be held accountable when the election comes for all this because this was started by this council. And then the mayor started talking about pretending some economic things are, like phones. People's landlines have been cut for years. You know, that's, who uses a landline anymore? I mean, you can make excuses. I suspect we're going to hear a lot of excuses as the election comes, but you will be held accountable.
Thank you, Ms. Rizki. Stephen Vick, Chuck Wasserberg, and Rich Galoon.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Vick, and I'm the Executive Director of the Infant Welfare Society of Evanston. Two of our program sites, known as Teen Baby Nursery and the Family Support Program, are located in the Family Focus Building in the Fifth Ward of Evanston. We've been in the Family Focus Building for close to 25 years and serve approximately 70 children, young adults, and families out of the building in the Fifth Ward. These young parents and children are some of our most vulnerable families and children in the city of Evanston. The Family Focus Building is in disrepair. As much as Family Focus Inc. can do as a landlord, it will not solve the serious challenges that this old and deteriorating building presents. Over 19 organizations and some 400 to 500 families are served out of this building on a daily basis. We are all working together to provide wraparound services, early childhood education, mentoring, mental health, trauma, after-school care, and the essential supports to Evanston's historically isolated and neglected low-income community. It is not acceptable to allow these circumstances to continue without speaking out. I am at the site almost every day. It is not out of sight and out of mind for me. It is front and center, and the crisis is real. We had to close the other day due to a heating issue. It was not the first time we've had to close. This impacts our families, makes them have alternate childcare, have to find dollars. Our community needs your help and needs leadership. These children are not someone else's kids from some other place. These are our Evanston kids. These are our most vulnerable Evanston families. These are our teenagers and young parents. We cannot continue to turn our backs on them. This is an equity issue, a humanitarian issue, and an Evanston issue. I have four asks, and I'll finish. I want the mayor and all members of city council to please sign off on a letter to Robin Gable's office to support a state capitol budget fund to repair the boiler, piping, bathroom, and renovations and plumbing. I'm asking the city to look at CDBG funding if there is an excess to be put at the Family Focus Building. I'm asking for the mayor and council to form a leadership committee to convene a group of constituents to solve this critical problem. Help verbalize that this is a crisis. We cannot wait for the boiler to break. We cannot wait to have all these kids locked out and all these programs and services closed. It'll be a catastrophe, so we need to act now. I'm asking for your leadership, Mayor.
Thank you, Stephen. Chuck, Chuck Wasserberg, Rich Galoon, James Engelmann.
I'm going to sit by time. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chuck. All right, Rich Galoon. You're not Rich Galoon?
I'm not Rich Galoon.
All right, just go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Raju Gatte. I, Rich Galoon, is going to use my time. I have somewhere I have to be shortly. I'm speaking about Robert Crown. As Alderman Wilson has said, if you draw a line from Loveless Park in northwest Evanston all the way to the South Boulevard Beach, above the line, in the more affluent part of Evanston, there are four community centers and three libraries. But below that line, in the less affluent part of Evanston, there are just two community centers and no libraries. The new Robert Crown Library begin to address this fundamental inequity. In the four schools that serve the neighborhoods around Robert Crown, almost half the students qualify for reduced or free lunch. The homework services provided by trained librarians, as well as tutoring and mentoring programs that will be provided by Northwestern students, can help to reduce the achievement gap amongst kids in the less affluent families. The Robert Crown Library creates an opportunity to give neighborhood students a leg up. 14% of Evanston households have no internet access at home. That number is more likely 25% in the neighborhoods around Crown. That's a real problem when so much of the homework, Quizlets, and whatnot are assigned and turned in online. The Robert Crown Library will help shrink the digital divide, not only providing computers and internet access while the library is open, but also allowing students to check out Wi-Fi hotspots to take home when they have a big project or quiz or test. Please vote yes in the MOU so the city can finish the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gatte. James Engelmann, Ray Friedman, and Priscilla Giles.
Hello. I'm James Engelmann from Fifth Ward. Please accept agreement with Valley Produce and name a lobby after them. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you, James. Ray Friedman, Priscilla Giles, then Mark Daniel.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, city council members, city manager, city clerk. I'll try to keep it short, although I have three different letters to read.
I just need it to be a minute thirty, Ray. Go.
Minute thirty. So it's two things, basically. What's the purpose of the meetings? I'm thinking that the purpose of the meetings is so that we all can have a discussion and come to a meeting of the minds. And the second point is where the money's coming from? How much money we have? How much money do we have to spend? Okay, the only other thing I wanted to say was about the TEFRA hearing, which I read in this 921 pages about the TEFRA hearing. I have an issue with it because I was there. And you're talking about TEFRA hearing for these bonds. You have followed the letter of the law, I understand. It seems like you violated the spirit of the law because how can you in good consciousness say that you had a valid TEFRA hearing if no one participated in it? Nobody talked about this, these bonds. So how can you say that you had it if nobody was there to talk about it? It's discussions that we have to have that we're not having.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. We got Priscilla Giles, Mark Daniel, then Diane Thodos.
Good evening. Before 2002, there was a foster community development plan in progress by the residents of the Fifth Ward. That name was usurped to be the West Side Master Plan, which began the destruction of the Fifth Ward community, mostly, and most recently, the 1,400 block of Emerson, displacing many low-income families, and still nothing income-producing for the Fifth Ward, which was the original request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. Mark Daniel, Diane Thodos, then Sandra Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Mark Daniel. I represent HPCW on item P2. It's a request for planning unit development approval for a permitted use in the Light Industrial District. I'm trying to help everyone get their cars washed. It's a lighter subject, but this project is one that staff has worked on quite hard over the past two years. We have been through each provision of the code, staff responses, two Aldermanic meetings, ward meetings, unanimous approvals across the board, and we're asking for your approval on this this evening. We do have our team here in case you have questions during the agenda item. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Diane Thodos, Sandra Taylor, and Dino Robinson.
I'm Diane Thodos from the Seventh Ward. Many longtime citizens on fixed incomes don't want to be forced to leave Evanston or become homeless because of an unnecessary escalating of their tax base. It is clear that Northwestern, which pays no real estate taxes to the city, state, or federal government, has a huge endowment of $11 billion and has paid out only $1 million for the Robert Crown Project as a used, for pre-purchasing of skating time, not even commitment to the actual project until after it's built. It's time to rise up and demand whether or not our low-income Evanston residents, many from the Fourth and Second and Fifth Wards, have the right to remain in Evanston because members of our city council have ignored their responsibility in accounting for their lives and voices and only listening to those with wealth and power. We do not pay our taxes so you can raise them with wanton disregard for the irresponsible funding of luxury projects to be laid on the backs of those who are least able to afford paying for them. The Poor People's Campaign is about holding the wealthy and powerful accountable and listening to the needs of the poor and underserved in our community, who will have the greatest impact by having the affordability of their current houses taken away. If you vote on this bond issue, you will be voting whether or not Evanston residents can stay, long-term Evanston residents on fixed incomes. Whether or not that housing is going to be affordable or not is going to be up to you.
Thank you, Diane. Sandra Taylor, Dino Robinson, and then Rich Galoon.
I'm Sandra Taylor. I cede my time.
Oh, thank you, Sandra. Okay. Dino, and then we've got Rich Galoon, and then Pete Jean-Greco.
Dino Robinson, Fifth Ward. I'll have, I'll send an email for the longer version of this letter in sake for this time. Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, council members, and Evanston residents here in the chamber. I'm here tonight on three key points for the perspective of partnership, equity, and engagement. I speak briefly about a 100-plus-year-old building located at 2010 Dewey Avenue, known as too many as either Foster School, King Lab, or Family Focus. Over the years, groups have facilitated workshops addressing the issues surrounding equity. Many ask the core question, how can we solve issues on equity? Despite best efforts, distribution is spread too thin or attached to new initiatives while ignoring decades-old initiatives. 2010 Dewey Avenue is a place that seems to be ignored. 2010 Dewey has established programs, partnerships, and equity-building efforts that benefit approximately 500 youth and residents year-round. It is in need of will and resources, and it is at risk of being forgotten for new, current, and trendy efforts. What if the structure of 2010 Dewey fails? In historical context, it's an area where children are bused to five different school districts. For decades, community witnessed differential treatment, and where development initiatives tend to stall. The City of Evanston strives to create the most livable city in Evanston. With collaborative resources from city connections and partners, 2010 Dewey can shore up its functional integrity and continue to be the model in which we all strive to achieve. If there is a will, if there is this will, collective will, we can achieve this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dino. Rich Galoon, Pete Jean-Greco, then Doreen Price.
Thanks. Rich Galoon, I'm a 15-year Evanston resident. I'm also the head of the board of Evanston Soccer Association, also known as Team Evanston. We've been serving, we're a nonprofit organization, serving approximately 500, 550 kids a year since 1991. We're very supportive of adding the three turf fields to the Robert Crown Facility, mainly because the state of our fields, you know, on natural grass today, it's just not, it's not working for us. You know, there, most competitive soccer clubs are using turf to survive, mainly because you take a beautiful day like today, be great for the kids to all play outside. Well, James Park's too soggy for that. They can't, it can't sustain, we can't play on those fields. So we end up going inside into turf today. In any case, clearly, the Chicago climate and having 75,000, a population of 75,000 people and limited green space, it's very difficult to support, you know, basically maintain natural, natural grass. That's why we at Evanston Soccer Association, with 550 kids, plus basically every youth sports organization out there that plays outside, is supportive and enthusiastic of this project, you know, probably counting 5,000 kids out there. That's a lot of people who are very supportive of this project. That's why we're supporting Robert Crown. We hope you will as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. All right, we got Pete Jean-Greco, Doreen Price, then Albert Gibbs.
Mayor, city council people, City Manager, and Pete Jean-Greco, and I'm on the board of the Friends of the Robert Crown Center. First want to, again, thank Valley Produce Fresh Markets. Their $250,000 commitment today brings the total in pledges and donations to nearly $12.4 million for the Robert Crown Project, and $5.4 million of those that is in cash on hand, that accounts that the city has access to. I wanted to address a couple of things that have come up here and in some letters to the council. It's been suggested that we should maybe delay the project or phase the project, and actually, city council people, remember, this was actually discussed back in 2017 and was rejected because anytime you phase or stop construction, you add 4% to 5% annually to the project. Say, last February, the library folks were in here to talk about the renovations of the downtown library, and one of their arguments against it was it was going to cost more if you delayed it. Well, the city chose, it had other projects, and so that same 4.5% will increase this cost. Moreover, if we change the scope of what we've been talking about for a better part of three years, it's in the MOU, Friends of Robert Crown would probably have to give back a lot of our donations because you can't bait and switch on a capital campaign. You can't say to people that you're getting a library and all these other things.
Order in the chamber.
And then bait and switch them and do that. So we would have to give back a lot of that, 12.4 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we've got Doreen Price, then Albert Gibbs. Welcome, Doreen.
Thank you. This is a result of all our community efforts, and what everyone's saying actually reinforces and helps me and supports me, and I'm supporting everyone else. So this is like, as much as it's a pain, this is a beautiful thing to see, and we struggled to get to this place. And even though we've made mistakes, I want to comment, the council, the mayor, the city manager, that we've gotten through a lot, and the stuff that you've heard is very sincere and very heartbreaking. I got a note back from Robin because, as you know, the council was addressed by Betty and her eagle eye at her good health right now. She caught things that obviously mattered to a lot of other people in terms of what are we doing with funding and where's this money coming from, and the bonds and all that other stuff, when all I saw was a $10 million difference. She saw a lot more. So what Robin said in response to what Betty said, what are you going to do when it comes to the vote, because she gave her this information, Robin said I could share this. For reasons of affordability for our neighborhoods and families struggling to stay here and unable to have the same lived experience as the average Evanston resident, I will be voting no. That pretty much summarizes what everyone else has said, and I have more written to address the equity issues and the fact that people in the Fifth Ward have waited since 2009. What homeowners, what homes are you going to have around when the Robert Crown Center is finished because people are leaving? And I've been told there's no data, and I think we need to have data in terms of when low-income people leave, because now Sarah Flax is really a huge advocate for equity. She amazed everybody. I hope this gets to her, Sarah, in terms of putting in perspective for the Steering Committee how equity is important and homeownership is key. And I had an article last October about homeownership in Durham, North Carolina, and that's key. And in my background and in my culture, it was key, and my mom and dad had a home, and you had it as an investment, and you stated it, which I pray I can do.
Thank you, Doreen. Thank you. All right.
Albert Gibbs, Fifth Ward. Listening to all of this about this, these bonds and stuff like this, I'm against it. I feel like I'm being gangstered by people that should know better. You seem to do what you want to do for yourselves. The consideration is not for the town. What's best for the town or those that will grow up in the town, because they won't take advantage of it and they won't get advantage of it. I'm voting no on this bond thing. I actually think you need to shut that mess down, down there on Main Dodge. I listened to... I listened to a tape about an older woman here saying, "Black people are stupid about porta-potties," or something, and I looked at this thing three, four, or five times. I'm convinced personally that you did say black people are stupid about porta-potties. It takes stupid to recognize stupid. It takes stupid to recognize stupid.
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking you.
And again, no, no, you can't, because it's not, it's not the way it goes. Say it after I'm done. But you did say it, and you even said, "Big boy pants." What black man you know you should be calling a boy? You still think that's intelligent? You think that's the way to go? Are you drunk when you say those things? Are you intoxicated?
Mr. Gibbs, Mr. Gibbs.
For what you do and what you say. You're not responsible, people here. You're a joke.
Thank you. Actually, actually, all, actually, all the mics were turned off in that instance. All right. Next, next, next speaker, next.
I'd like to hear what you let her say to me. What do you want to say to me?
You know what? I'm not going to let her say anything, because we're not going to get into one-on-one with people here.
When she was trying to, you didn't seem to stop. I'm not going to go with it.
Mr. Gibbs, Mr. Gibbs.
I just need to speak my piece.
And you've got an opportunity.
And when you saw she tried to cut me off, that's another thing of disrespect. You don't seem to care about.
You've got an opportunity to speak, Mr. Gibbs.
That's another thing of disrespect.
You've got an opportunity.
That's a joke.
There's someone else that would like an opportunity to speak.
Everybody has their chance.
All right.
And I'm not a stupid black man, and you've insulted me to the core.
Mr. Gibbs.
You've insulted me to the core. Now, if I said something like that about your race, you'd want me arrested.
All right.
Pardon me, stand up so I can hear you.
Let's, let's not, let's.
Pardon me? I'm talking to myself.
Why can't I speak?
You're full of fat ice cream.
We've got another, all right. What can I, what's going on with this? Hello?
Nothing, I think I'll hold the mic.
All right. The next speaker, next speaker, Steph Kruger. Do we have a Steph Kruger? Welcome.
Give us one second. We're having trouble with mics.
Mike, son.
I do not. Testing, testing.
Has my time begun?
No, your time is not.
Okay. Hello?
Are you going to turn the mics on?
We're having trouble up here with the mics.
I think that maybe the.
Is it working?
Hi. I'm going to wait for the mic.
Hello? Hello? Check, check, check. Testing, testing.
Test, test. Hello?
Hello? Is it on?
Test?
The mics are working on the broadcast? Oh, that's interesting. Okay. Um, okay.
It's just, it's just working in the broadcast, so.
Okay, so in the control room, it's coming through on the TV.
Okay. So then, folks, folks could, folks could hear.
Could there be something over here? No.
Hello?
All of our mics are off.
Yeah, all of our mics are off.
Can we take a two-minute recess? Aren't we sort of?
What's that?
Aren't we sort of?
I guess maybe official.
Just stay up here, just stay up.
I was going to use a bathroom.
You can go use a bathroom, sure.
We should also turn the mics off, since it's working. Wouldn't you turn off the microphones?
I didn't hit it. He did, Devon did something.
That's all you touched on?
We could go ahead. I mean, she can speak, she can speak just in her regular voice if it's picking up on the mic.
It is, it is broadcast, like I said, I have no idea why it's not.
We can do that, and we'll just talk, we'll just talk out here.
People can hear.
And we'll just try to talk loud? Okay.
I knew, I knew you. Nice to see you.
Yes. So folks can hear you online, uh, and, and through the broadcast, you just can't be heard in the room. So if you just speak up in the room.
Open the door so they can hear us out there.
They, I think they can hear you out there.
I'm the last one.
We've, the, just so folks know, the, we're going to talk into the mics up here. I realize people can't hear them, and the same will go with our resident who's about to speak. But the mics apparently are working, and in the control room and on TV, they can hear you, so we'll just try to speak loudly so folks in this room can hear us. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Stephanie Kruger. I fully support what Mr. Gibbs just brought up. I watch this quite often on television, and I hear quite often rude, inappropriate comments towards people, the citizens that are speaking, so I'd like that understood, that I fully agree with him. I don't want to specify one person in particular, but it generally is one person who is very rude. That being said, again, my name is Stephanie Kruger. I'm a lifelong resident. I went to Lincoln School, Nichols School, ETHS. I had five children skate at Robert Crown. I am in support of a new rink. I am currently a Glenview Park District employee. We receive updates as to what's going on in that village. They passed, they voted and passed a $17 million referendum for a brand-new two-rink, plus a studio rink, plus a community center, ICE center. I received an update this weekend. $17 million was the estimate. They received two bids with, including improved, increased, um, desired projects as part of it. That came in for $1 million less than the 17 million, and this is from the ground up. So, again, I am for an improved ICE rink. I had two sons play NCAA college hockey. I love the sport. I had daughters that played hockey. I have a long-term foster daughter that learned to ice skate at Robert Crown. I learned to ice skate at Robert Crown. We need it improved. I'm unclear why there's almost a 43,000, $43 million difference for almost, almost the same thing.
Thank you.
So that is a question I think we should have answered.
Great.
Between 17 million and almost 60 million, that's, that's a big difference. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Okay. Let me just make, make one note. We, we had one, we had one other person that had sent in a comment and couldn't speak. I just wanted to get that acknowledged for the record, Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Okay, so it's a, oh, it's a, um, public comment from Michael Deniroff regarding the unanimous statement from the North Suburban Chief of Police Association regarding the actions of Kim Fox. So I'm going to submit it to the clerk's office.
Great. So we got, we'll submit that to the, that to the record, that statement that was sent in, and then Clerk Reed, did you have anything? And then we're going to conclude public comment.
Yeah, I, I just want to acknowledge that I was the one who turned off the mics. Uh, I think it's highly inappropriate for both a member of the public and an alderman to use this platform to argue back and forth. I don't think that that's proper decorum for this, uh, for this venue. Uh, and so I do hope that in the future, both folks, especially folks sitting on this dais, take a stance of leadership to make sure that we're setting the example for how the public should conduct itself, and I definitely think that the public should also make sure that we treat this venue with the respect that it deserves. Um, I think I've been someone who has been known to speak truth to power, whether it's folks on this dais or the folks who elect me out there, and I think it's very important that we continue to treat this venue with the utmost respect. So, thank you.
All right, Clerk Reed. Thank you, thank you, Clerk.
You can hear it outside. The mics are still off.
It's still out there. Well, I'm afraid we're going to have to get by with our technical difficulties as, as we have them today, and, uh, and we'll just, uh, speak up here. Uh, the city staff are working to try to improve the, uh, the mics and so forth. Um, thank you for those remarks, Clerk Reed, and, uh, you know, I agree, and I would just ask, I mean, we've always had a lot of passion in this room, but we've also had a lot of respect and civility, and I would ask that that continue amongst the residents to the elected officials and vice versa. Uh, with that, we're going to move on to the agenda tonight.
All right, so the mic's on, I will talk, speak up. Uh, at the last regularly scheduled meeting of the city council, I voted on the prevailing side of ordinance 4019. Tonight, I'm making a motion to reconsider. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Okay. As I, as I, thank you. So we've got a motion to reconsider and a second. As I understand, uh, the rules, rule number 22.1, motion to reconsider, under city council rules, uh, it has to have occurred, uh, for this development. This is on the library parking lot, for those of you that are following, uh, the night of the meeting, which would have been, um, the 18th. Um, is there, so the, the next question would be, um, given that, is there, uh, an interest amongst council members up here to suspend the rules? Uh, and that would be per rule 3.2, it would require two-thirds of the aldermen to vote in favor of it, which would be five, since we have seven here tonight. Uh, so I would, uh, to suspend the rules, um, so we'd have to take a, a vote to suspend the rules, and then a vote on this motion to reconsider.
I move we suspend the rules.
Okay. Uh, Alderman, uh, see, see if our lights are working tonight. Alderman Rainey, did you have something you wanted to speak on that?
Um, I just want to know, can you hear me?
Uh, we.
Oh, okay.
We're just a little.
Could you just explain, um, the reasoning why it had to have been done at the original meeting?
Sure. So I'm going to ask the city, city attorney. I spoke to her before in anticipation of this. Uh, so city attorney.
So, under rule 22.
Louder.
Under rule 22.1, a special use at the beginning of the rule, talks about special use, uh, the motion to reconsider must be done at the same.
May be done.
Maybe.
Maybe done.
And all other motions, motions to reconsider at the next regular schedule. You're correct, maybe the request after you suspend the rule under rule 22.
Did you, is your light on for that from before?
I'd like, I'd like to request, uh, that we suspend the rules.
Okay. So we had a motion to suspend the rules, we had a second from Alderman Fisk, uh, so.
I think that requires a.
Does that require a roll call vote to suspend? All right. So, uh, city clerk, if you could take the roll on that motion? This is the motion to suspend the rules.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revel?
Aye.
All right. So the motion to suspend the rules passes on a six-to-one, six-to-one vote. Uh, Alderman Sufferton, do you want to move the motion, uh, that you offered now, that we've suspended the rules?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the vote. I'd like us to continue to work with the developer, the adjacent property owners, the library, see if we can do what we need to do, which is figure out a way to solve this problem and address this issue, see if there's some sort of agreement to be made, and get this library parking lot situation resolved.
Second.
For purposes of clarity, the only thing that can be reconsidered is the ordinance for Alderman and the team.
Right.
Any other.
Right. I'm saying, that's what I'm.
The only thing changing at the beginning of the year. One ordinance.
Right. That's, that's fine.
What would the vote be required for tonight? I mean, what would the, what would the number be?
A four motion to reconsider.
Wait, that's.
It is, uh, two-thirds.
Of the, of the.
Of those present.
Of those present. Point of order. I, I can't hear a thing she's saying.
If folks can speak louder.
Michelle, you've either got to come over here or speak up really loudly. I have no idea what she said.
No, that's okay. You need to speak into it because it's still recording.
Do we have a handheld mic or something that works?
That's not working either. We looked into that, yeah.
Uh, so to answer your question, the, uh, it would need two-thirds vote under 22.1.
Two-thirds vote.
Oh.
So again, five, five votes of the members that are here tonight.
So there are seven present, five are needed.
Okay, I heard that part, but on what?
The motion to reconsider.
Uh, this is the motion to reconsider. Yep. There was a, uh, that motion put forward by Alderman Sufferton, it was second, and now we're up for discussion. Alderman Wilson?
So, you know, I still don't feel like I got appropriate answers to the questions that I had at the last meeting. We did not have a contractor who has a contract for the property. We didn't have commitments from lenders. Um, I'm a little blown away that, uh, in the absence of Alderman Winn, who had a, you know, a serious family emergency, that this is the way we're going to do this. So, super disappointed, um, and, uh, you know, I just, uh, you know, thought we were better than this, so.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Revel?
I, I think we need clarification on, on exactly what this motion to reconsider means, because, um, in my view, it doesn't mean that we are now voting yes or no on the proposal that we considered and voted on a few weeks ago. We are.
Correct.
Talking about entering into a new conversation.
Correct. Yeah, sorry. Just to get the motion to reconsider, yeah.
I'm going to revisit it. And so I retract part of what I said and part of what I told you, since it's just an intended, so I apologize for that, but, uh, I still don't think the answers. Perhaps somebody will come in with the answers to the questions that are. But I don't, I don't intend to support.
Take a fresh look.
Okay. All right. Seeing no more, no more lights, city clerk, could you take the roll, please? And this is the motion to reconsider.
Is there a question, Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Oh, okay. Alderman Rainey?
Aye. Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
All right. The motion to reconsider, this is the, the library parking lot passes the City Council on a six to one vote to reconsider. All right. We're now going to move on to the consent agenda.
So this will be placed on the...
Excuse me? Mr. Mayor, members of the council, now that the motion is back on the table, the council can either leave it on the table until it is called off the table, or their motion would be in order to either consider the ordinance, to place it for further discussion on a date certain, send it back to staff for additional work, but it is on the table. So, I would recommend that the council take action this evening to take it off the table and, and send it somewhere.
Alderman Fisk?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't understand. Is it, is it currently on the table?
It is on the table. So the council may choose to leave it on the table until such time they wish to remove it from the table and discuss it. They can set it for discussion, rehearing of the ordinance at a date certain. The ordinance could be returned to staff for further work. There are options. So I would just ask that, that perhaps if there's an intent, that it be set for discussion at a date certain. Otherwise, parliamentally, parliament, parliamentally, it is now on the table and can be taken from the table at the, at the will of the governing body.
I, I'm building...
Do you vote on for action?
No.
No, I know, I know. Just curious.
Don't scare me like that. Building on what Alderman Sufferton said, I think there is, this is an opportunity to expand the discussion that we've had in the past. This is an extremely important project for the city of Evanston. I think there are still some unanswered questions. I would definitely like to expand the discussion with the adjacent property owners and address issues concerning the alley. My recommendation is that we leave this on the table to a date certain. But I'm open to hearing what other folks on the council think about that. My, my guess is that we can have a substantial discussion with the community within the next three to four weeks. And that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Rainey?
Sorry. I don't, I don't...
Alderman Fisk and Alderman Revelle and Alderman Sufferton, I was thinking it might be productive to form a subcommittee of those of you who have been intimately involved in this and then come back. Because I don't think putting it on the table and letting it languish is a good idea.
I, Alderman Rainey, I don't, the intention is not to let it languish. I think there's information that needs to be acquired and discussed, and I think we've made a good start to doing that. And I would like to continue those conversations as Ward Alderman.
Okay.
I know everyone involved, and I think we're moving in the, in a very productive manner together.
So maybe you're acting as a subcommittee anyway.
I don't need to be a subcommittee of one, but I'm, I'm, I'm just saying. Alderman Sufferton and I had a very good conversation with some of the stakeholders, and I'm encouraged by what we heard and the way things are moving.
It sounds good to me. All right.
City Attorney, did you have something?
I'm just, I'm a little confused. This exact plan development, is my mic not working? Or am I just speaking appropriately?
You're just speaking, but they say you can hear this at home.
Make sure the mic's on, though. Okay. When there, the discussion seems to be going in the direction of forming some sort of subcommittee, a larger discussion. My greater point is that this is the ordinance that goes back for reconsideration, not a different development, not an amended development.
Correct.
And I just want to be clear for the public that it's not, this, this can't change. It's not subject to additional negotiation. This is the deal that the council is re, is reevaluating.
And we understand that.
Okay.
So just so I'm clear, do we have, do we have, we, we have volume? People can hear us, right? Is that right? Okay. So, just so I'm clear, so we are tabling it with no...
On the table.
It's on the table. We're just leaving it on the table. Got it. Okay. All right. Seeing, seeing nothing else on, on this, Alderman Sufferton, can you take us through the M1 and then APW?
Sure.
Can I ask that the minutes be held?
Sure.
All right. All the minutes are held.
Item M1 be held. All right. Are you ready to go?
Yep.
Okay. Item A1 is payroll, February eighteenth, 2019 through March third, 2019, in the amount of two million, seven hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. And payroll, March fourth, 2019 through March seventeenth, 2019, in the amount of two million, seven hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred forty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Item A2 is the bills list, April ninth, 2019, in the amount of eight million, one hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred ten dollars and ninety cents. Credit card activity, not including Amazon purchases for the period ending February twenty-sixth, 2019, in the amount of one hundred eighty-nine thousand, three hundred seventy dollars and seventy-nine cents. Item A3 is held. Item A4 is held. Item A5 is a contract with Hacker and Company, Inc., for Emerson Street traffic signals. That is for action. Item A6 is a contract with Terra for Emerson Street traffic signal construction engineering. That is for action. Item A7, a contract with Landmark Contractors, Inc., for the Main Street corridor improvement project, for action. Item A8, a contract with Stanley Consultants, Inc., for Phase Three construction services for the Main Street corridor improvement project. That is for action. Item A9, a contract with J.A. Johnson Paving Company for pavement patching. That is for action. A10, contract with G&amp;L Contractors for 2019 debris hauling, for action. Item A11, a contract with G&amp;L Contractors for purchase of granular materials. Item A12 is a contract with Patriot Pavement Maintenance for crack ceiling services. Item A13, a contract with Precision Pavement Markings, Inc., for pavement markings. Item A14, contract with Herrera Landscape and Snow Removal, Inc., for the 2019 Streetscape and Rain Garden Landscape Maintenance. Item A15, a 2019 lakefront concession contract renewal with Crave Concessions, LLC. Item A16, agreement with Evanston Township High School to supply lunches for the 2019 summer food program. Item A17, a contract with Elevator Inspection Service Company, Inc., for City of Evanston elevator inspection program. Item A18, purchase of four vehicles for operations in the city of Evan... Association of Firefighters Local 742. Item A20, great merchant grant program for the Hill Arts Business District. Item A21, R19, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an easement in Custer, LLC. Not sure, that is removed. Item A22 is Resolution 25 R19, approving the settlement and release of all claims in Paul Callidwell versus City of Evanston et al. Item A23 is Resolution 20 R19, a memorandum of understanding with Friends of Robert Crown. All right. I will modulate my voice. Item A...
Oh, but that turns off the...
Give us one second, Alderman Sufferton. Hello? Maybe that works soon. Okay, go on, Alderman Sufferton, sorry.
Item A24, Resolution 27 R19, authorizing the city manager to execute a gift agreement with Wintrust Bank for a donation to the new Robert Crown Community Center. Item A25, Resolution 31 R19, execute a gift agreement with Valley Produce for the donation to the new Robert Crown Community Center. A26 and A27 are off. Item A28 is ordinance 24 oh nineteen, increasing the number of Class T liquor licenses for Halium Time and Glass Banquet Hall located at 1560 Oak Avenue. Alderman Wilson has requested suspension of the rules, so this is for introduction and action. Ordinance 25 oh nineteen, increasing the number of Class D liquor licenses for your asked dining services located at 1560 Sherman Avenue. This is also for introduction and action at the request of Alderman Wilson. Item A30, ordinance 26 oh nineteen, increasing the number of Class T liquor licenses for your asked dining group located at 1560 Sherman Avenue. This is for introduction and action at the request of Alderman Wilson. Item A31, ordinance 28 oh nineteen, to approve the construction of a local improvement known as Evanston Special Assessment Number 1524. This is paving of the alley north of Simpson Street and east of McDaniel through the special assessment process. This is for introduction. And item A32, ordinance 29 oh nineteen, updating city code section 10, 4, 16, 2A for vehicle parking permits. This is for introduction.
Thank you, Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Revelle, can you take us through planning and development?
Sure. P1, ordinance 18 dash zero dash 19, amending the city code section 6 dash 15 dash 14 dash 7, active ground floor uses, to revise the listing of appropriate ground floor uses in the Central Street Overlay District. This is for introduction. P2, ordinance 30 dash zero dash 19, granting a special use permit for a planned development at 2425. This is for a car wash facility with 20 vacuum spaces and four parking spaces in the industrial district and redevelopment overlay district. The applicant is seeking one-site development allowance for an accessory structure that is three feet from the principal structure where 10 feet is required. This is for introduction only this evening. And P3, ordinance 22 dash zero dash 19, special use permit for a planned development at 910 938 Custer Avenue and amending the zoning map.
Could you take that off, please?
Okay.
Great. Thank, thank you, Alderman Revelle. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please, on the consent agenda?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
All right. The consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to zero vote. We're now going to move to the items that were taken off the consent agenda. The first one was minutes. Is there anything there, Clerk Reed, or we'll just revisit that at the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll just revisit.
Okay. All right. So next...
To correct, to be transparent, to correct a few links within the minutes.
Okay. All right. So we'll see those again in the future. Alderman Sufferton, if you could take us through the APW ones.
Sure. So, um...
Oh, let me, let's, yeah. Alderman Revelle, can you introduce A3?
Amazon credit card activity, ending for the period ending February twenty-sixth, 2019, in the amount of six thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and nine cents. For action.
All right. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
I abstain.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
All right. A3, Amazon credit card passes, seven to zero, with Alderman Sufferton abstaining. A4, Alderman Sufferton?
Sure. Item A4 is a contract with Chicago Land Paving, Inc., for the 2019 parking lot improvements project at 717 Howard Street and parking lot 51, Towneich Park, in the amount total of four hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. This is for action.
Second.
Okay. Alderman Sufferton?
Sure. I pulled, I voted no in committee, and I just want to have this discussion at council. When we get towards the end of the year and we talk about that we need to have a parking survey done, or a parking study, or have some sort of citywide parking plan, one of the things that's said is that we don't have the hundred thousand dollars that we've budgeted for. And so I'd just like us to be mindful of that as we start approving these projects. I talked to Alderman Rainey. I understand the need for the parking on Howard Street, and it replaces parking that was lost at Howard and Chicago Avenue. But the biggest complaint that I am getting relating to parking, besides just, you know, whatever, standard, this sucks, is that we don't have a plan. And I would like us to be mindful of the importance of being able to demonstrate that there's a plan, there's a reason why we charge what we charge, and it's based on solid information. So, I'm going to vote no on this, not because of the merits of these projects, but because I want us, before we start spending all of our parking fund money, to be cognizant of the fact that we should probably do a citywide parking survey and study, and then work legislatively off of that.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Sufferton. Seeing no more lights, City Clerk, could you take the roll on A4?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
And Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
All right. So A4, contract with Chicago, Chicago Land Paving for the 2019 parking lot improvements project, 17, or 717 Howard Street, passes the City Council on a six to one vote. A21, is that next, Alderman?
Yes. A21 was pulled. It is, wait. Judy, was that yours?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So, Resolution 21 R19, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an easement agreement with Evanston Custer, LLC. The Plan Commission and staff recommend adoption of Resolution 21 R19 for an easement agreement to increase the usable width of the north, south, and east-west alleys that abut the side and rear of 910, nine, to 938 Custer Avenue to a total width of 20 feet. The resolution is conjunction with ordinance 22 oh nineteen for a map amendment to rezone from manufacturing transitional employment district to mixed-use employment district and a special use for a planned development for 40 single-family attached townhomes, which was introduced at City Council on March 11th, 2019. This is for action.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. City Clerk, could you take the roll on A21, Resolution 21 dash R dash 19?
I think we need a roll call on this one.
If I can do a roll call, I'll do a roll call. Can I do a roll call?
Yes.
All right. That's okay. Wait, I was asking for a roll call.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
All right, Resolution 21R19, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an easement agreement with Evanston Custer LLC, passes the Evanston City Council on a six to one vote with Alderman Fisk voting no. A26, Alderman Sufferton?
A26 is Resolution 35R19, amending the City of Evanston budget policy. Staff recommends the approval of Resolution 35R19, increasing the current debt limit from $150,000, it was amended to $150,000, or, sorry, $150 million to $152 million, to cover the proposed 2019 A and B bond issues and any unexpected changes. As discussed in the corresponding transmittal memorandum, unabated debt is estimated to be slightly over $150,000 for the end of 2019, including the proposed 2019 issues. For action.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? So I, all right, I have a question, I just want to make sure. So, Hitesh, we were going to go from $150,000 to $160,000. We had a long conversation, a couple meetings, this council did, about the new Robert Crown Center, about the traditional capital work that we're doing each year. The debt limit increased previously. Did you understand at that point that you were going to have to come back to the council, you know, in 2019 and ask for another increase? And can you just elaborate how, you know, we went, you were suggesting $150,000 to $160,000, and now we're saying $152,000? I just want to make sure everybody up here understands and that we're comfortable with what's going on.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. So, yes, when the staff came to the City Council last time, when we had the first Robert Crown bond issue along with the CIP and TIF bond issue, but instead of like, kind of going with the, like, say, asking for a $50 million or $100 million lump sum, you know, we just take it like every year, see where we are, even our debt service payments, you know, like we, principal payments which we make, that reduces this amount. And again, one more distinction between the total bonds versus the debt limit. Debt limit is unabated debt, means total debt, less the debt paid out of the water fund, all the enterprise fund, water fund, sewer fund, parking fund, and then other TIF, and any other source of revenue. So these are called all the unabated resources. So you take the total bonds, reduce it by abated debt, and then the net amount, that's where, which is called a property tax-supported debt. That is where we look for that. So right now, if you look at the memo, we said that right now we are at around $134 million. We expect the 2019 bond issue amount, unabated, would be around $23.2 million. And we would roughly make $7.2 million in principal unabated payment as of December 1, 2019. And when we add up all these numbers, we expect that numbers to be around $150,000, $151 million. I asked for $160 million. Obviously, we always account for the, some contingencies when we, because the, when we finally issue the bond sale, you know, and as a part of any restructuring, you know, it might move a little bit. Now, again, it could be a half a million, million dollar more out of the $30 million bond issue. And I think that the discussed as the APW, I think we decided, or at least the committee members were comfortable with reducing it to the $152 million instead of $160 million.
All right, so nothing was out of the ordinary and changed from the commitments that the city made a year ago with Robert Crown to this?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. All right, seeing no, seeing no lights. City Clerk, could you take the roll on A26, Resolution 35-R-19?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
No.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
All right, A26, amending the City of Evanston budget policy to a debt limit or ceiling of $152 million, passes on a six to one vote with Alderman Ruth Simmons voting no. Alderman Sufferton, can you take us to A27?
Sure. A27 is Ordinance 27019, authorizing 2019 A and B general obligation bond issues. Staff recommends introduction of Ordinance 27019, providing for the issuance of one or more series not to exceed $18 million general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2019A, to finance construction and equipment of a new Robert Crown community center, ice complex and library. Center and one or more series of not to exceed $18 million general obligation corporate purchase bonds, Series 2019B, for capital improvements of the City of Evanston, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing the execution of one or more bond orders in connection therewith, providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax for the payment of the principal of an interest on said bonds and the authorizing and directing the sale of said bonds at public competitive sale. The ordinance will be adopted and signed at the City Council meeting on April 22, 2019. The final terms of the bonds will be approved by the designated officers under the ordinance after the bond sale, which is scheduled for May 16, 2019, by completion of the bond order as authorized by the bond ordinance. For introduction.
Second.
That was a mouthful there, Alderman Sufferton, wasn't it? All right, is there any discussion on this? Alderman Revelle?
I have a question for staff. We heard briefly from Mr. Gian Greco about the implications of doing the project in phases, and I was just wondering if we could have a little bit more discussion from staff about what, what the impact would be of doing the project in phases?
Or Mr. Storey, if that's more appropriate?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager and city clerk, Erica Storey, Assistant City Manager. We are currently under contract with the construction manager to build the building that was scoped out, and that is the project that was approved. And that contract was, I believe, for $40-some million. And that was for the completion of the project that was scoped. So at this point in time, we would have to attempt to break that contract to see if the project could then be phased. I don't think that that possibility is a smart move because it will end up costing us more in the long run. Things that have been talked about, leaving rooms unfinished, meeting rooms and things like that. The costs associated with building out those is not very much. The major costs are in building the structure, the stormwater detention, the parking lot. You would have to say, we're just simply not going to do the turf fields. And then you potentially could reduce the cost of the project. But then we would have to return many of the donations that have been given because they were for the fields. That's my take on the idea of phasing. Happy to answer any additional questions.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
I asked for an update on our diversity goals being met for this project. I know last report, we were not meeting our goals, and an explanation was given that we were in the specialty trades, and as the project progressed, it would balance out. And I haven't gotten an update on that.
That was my understanding as well, as far as meeting the goals that were set. I know that they, the construction manager is scheduled to attend the MWEBE Committee. I can get that information for you before the next City Council meeting, but I don't have it with me right now.
So with that said, and the reasons that I stated in committee, there's, there's just no way that I can support, and I see that the votes are here, but a $55 million-plus project that is struggling to comply with our diversity goals, one that is now running over budget, one that will challenge the affordability of the community overall. It's just, it's just no way that I can support it. I also don't understand why I can't get a report on where we're at with compliance for diversity. So I'd ask Hitesh for that. Is it not something that you can do real time? Or how much money has been spent to this point? Are those answers that you have?
We can bring it to the MWEBE, I think we're working with Sharon, you know, who is our coordinator, working with the main contractor in that.
So I understand that, but we have a very important vote today. And my support is going to be based on a lot of factors. And one is definitely going to be minority and local participation in contracting of this. This is an opportunity for us to have created significant jobs and to have contracted many minority and local employers. This has been billed as an opportunity for community development, economic development. And to this point, I'm not seeing that. And so as Chair of MWEBE, I certainly have a responsibility to, to hold the staff accountable to that. And so I can't support, for all the reasons of affordability and livability that we talk about, I can't support it for that reason, but also I can't get an answer on if we're compliant. And I said in the meeting, if we weren't compliant, that I was going to be asking that the whole project be shut down completely. At a minimum, we should be able to be contracting and employing women, minorities and local people.
I totally understand. I've been in contact with the construction manager weekly, we have weekly meetings. They have given no indication that they are not able to meet those goals. Everything that they have stated to me is, as you said, that the specialty trades were being awarded first, and that once they had an opportunity to award the remainder of the trades, that they would meet or exceed those goals. So I understand the predicament that you are in at present, but my indication from the contractor is that they will meet those goals. And I have been given no other indication from them to understand anything any different than that. And I just wanted to make one other note that I completely understand the concerns that you raised and everything that you said, but I just wanted to state for the record that the project at present is not over budget.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. How much money is spent to date on the project?
Believe, is Laura, is Laura here? Laura can answer that. We can get that number for you, but from what I understand, last year we borrowed the $25 million, and that $25 million, plus the $5 million that the Friends of Crown are going to give us in the next 30 days, was going to carry us until we issued the bonds in June and received the money from the next $15 million issue. So approximately, that's $30 million. We've probably spent, probably in the neighborhood of $20 to $25 of that.
So $25 million spent, and we're possibly and likely non-compliant with our diversity goals. It's just not okay. It's just not okay. So I don't know what we do. I do understand that having a project left incomplete is not helpful for anyone. But I would challenge the organizations and the institutions that care so much about ice skating and whatever else it is that has committed them to this project to do more, to help subsidize this project so that we don't have to take on any of the financial burden, any further financial burden.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman, Alderman, did you want to add something, or a city manager?
Yeah, just, I'm going through the MBE Committee minutes. The last minutes that were approved had a report from Bulleye Andrews. We have been giving reports on a regular basis. The next meeting, Hitesh is coming up, is next Wednesday? So we will have a report then. Alderman Ruth Simmons sent an email Friday afternoon asking that we provide additional information, and I expressed to her that we would get it to her as soon as possible. So we have been keeping the MWEBE Committee abreast of this. I don't know, Hitesh, every meeting, but certainly regularly with that update. And we will do our best to get the update that is being prepared for the next MWEBE Committee out this week.
Great.
I want to just add that this should not move forward if it's not compliant. This is too much money from the city and too much of a burden to the residents of Evanston for us to move forward and not meet our diversity goals at a minimum. So I would ask that we at least hold this until we know if we're at least compliant. That's the least of this discussion, if we're compliant with our diversity goals.
And again, Alderman Ruth Simmons, members of the council, reading the minutes from the meeting in January, and I don't know, there was not a meeting in March. I don't know if there was a report in February, I don't, the minutes aren't included. The Bulleye Andrews gave an update, I'm reading from the minutes, gave an update on the Robert Crown project. Today, $7.7 million has been expended, 49% women and minority total projects. So they reported in January, 49%. So if we are not meeting goals, I don't have that information. The last information I have from the MWEBE Committee indicated to the contrary. So again, we're prepared certainly to give you the information as quickly as we can. We were planning on having it for the next meeting next week. We'll get you the report that will be on the agenda next week, this week.
I'd like to move that we hold it until we're sure that we're compliant with minority, with diversity goals.
Okay, we're going to move on. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, I'd like to have clarification from Corporation Council on our exposure to liability, if we were to either stop or break the contract on the construction.
So there would be significant ramifications to this. Yes, it is. So with our contract with Bulleye Andrews, there's a performance schedule built into the contract. And Bulleye Andrews has to meet certain deadlines in order to deliver the project in time. And we have ordered a lot of different equipment, and there are subcontract to this job, so it wouldn't just be a breach of contract claim from our general, but it would also be potential mechanic slings filed against the city. They were ready to perform, you know, we just ordered a Zamboni that's very expensive. There are a lot of ramifications of this, if the city were to even delay the contract because it has future contracts baked into it. For example, that the city needs to have, finish this in order for certain seasons to start. And a lot of those donors need to be able to program their seasons. Director Hemingway has 2019, 2020 built based on a performance date. So if we stop construction, it would have significant ramifications.
Thank, thank you. Okay. Alderman Rainey?
Well, this, A26, A26-27, the budget amendment, 2019 bond issues, that includes other capital expenditures. That is not just, it includes parks and bridges and roads, et cetera. So, I mean, I don't, it doesn't just target the Robert Crown. So I'd be very concerned about putting a hold on that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm aware of that, but we just can't afford to have any more.
But what are the goal, I would like, I don't, I don't know where to go to look at what the goals are and what our accomplishments have been. Do I go to, is the only place they're stated is at the MWEBE meeting? I mean-
Do we have staff from that committee that can, Hitesh? So their reply was that they were too early in the project to be compliant, and they believed that it would balance out. But $22, $25 million in, we certainly should be clear about our goals.
Right, and I think, Laura, I don't know whether, but I think at the January report, I think we were close to around $9 or $10 million spent, actual money spent.
Right now, that's what we're-
Microphone?
Right. Right, so $10 million spent on the, like, right around, yeah, even $9 million, I think, when we last met on the, and I think we talked about it, and I think, yes, they expressed their concerns, I think, the main contractor, about the, meeting the goals and finding the right people or all that. So, but definitely, yeah, Sharon Johnson, who is the lead person on these one, works with that, sits down with the contractor periodically and reviews all those numbers from diversity, LEP and others. So, yeah, definitely, I'll talk to her tomorrow and kind of brief, or send out the email or wherever the, the council desires.
Are there penalties imposed if they don't meet it?
Yes, and that calculation is going, and that's where I think, it's a periodic meeting where Sharon Johnson sits down with the main contractor, yeah.
Okay. We got Alderman Wilson, then Alderman Revelle?
Well, and I think you just hit on the point, Mayor, that is, if they don't meet what they're supposed to meet, we have remedies pursuant to the agreements. On the other hand, if we breach the contract, we lose. So, you know, breaching the contract in advance of that would put us in a terrible position, and we would lose, I'd hate to imagine the kind of money we'd lose. So whereas if they don't meet the targets, we actually have remedies, and we would hopefully theoretically win, so.
And Hitesh, so I do have a question, I want to understand TEFRA. Because last year when we did this, we went through a whole TEFRA hearing.
Right.
And why is it this year we don't have, I presume we don't have to do that, and we're following the rules properly, but why is that?
Right, and I, we want, we have the representative from Chapman and Cutler, who are our bond counsel, so I can introduce him to you.
Sure, come on, come on up.
Joe.
We just want to make sure we're doing things by the book here.
Joe, can you?
My name is Joe Savarino from Chapman and Cutler. So the TEFRA hearing, similar to like other local municipalities hold binding hearings before issuing certain type of bonds. You don't have to do that on an annual basis, it's good for a duration over a year. And so my understanding is the city held their TEFRA hearing before the 2018 bond issue, and the par amount that the TEFRA hearing was for has not been issued in, it had, the total amount of par of bonds that has been issued has not exceeded the amount of the par amount that was published and the hearing was held for. So the aggregate of the 2018 bond issue plus the 2019 bonds will still be within the par amount of the TEFRA hearing that was already conducted. So you're still within the time period from the original hearing, and that's why these bonds are authorized and another hearing is not needed.
Okay, thank, thank you for that.
Again, just to add to that, because, yes, we, last time, like, a TEFRA hearing was held for $50 million, and we issued $24 million bonds last year, and this time we are going for around $15 million. And it's, as we said, from the timeframe, we are less than a year from when we held the hearing, so that's why we will find with not.
Thank you, Hitesh. Alderman Revelle?
Well, I just wanted to point out that this is just for introduction this evening, so there is time for us to get more answers to the questions that Alderman Ruth Simmons is asking before we have to vote for action, take action.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Alderman. All right, seeing no, seeing no more lights. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please, on A27, 7, Ordinance 27-0-19, authorizing 2019 A and B general obligation bonds?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
No.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
All right, Ordinance 27-0-19 passes the Evanston City Council on a six to one vote with Alderman Ruth Simmons voting no. Alderman Revelle, can you take us to P3?
This is Ordinance 22-0-19, a special use permit for a planned development at 910-938 Custer Avenue, and an amendment to the zoning map. Plan Commission and staff recommend adoption of the ordinance and approval of the map amendment to rezone from Transitional Manufacturing Employment District to a Mixed Use Employment District and a special use for a planned development for 40 single-family attached townhomes in five standalone buildings that feature interior courtyards, two cargo-attached garages per dwelling unit, and building height of four stories. The proposal includes six site development allowances, and this is for action.
Is there any discussion? Is there a second? Thank you. Is there a second to P3? Okay. All right, seeing no discussion. City Clerk, could you take the roll on P3, Ordinance 22-0-19?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Is your mic on, just to get it on the record?
Aye.
I think you said aye. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton. And Alderman Revelle.
All right, P3, Ordinance 22-0-19, special use permit for a planned development at 1910, excuse me, 910-938 Custer Avenue, and amending the zoning map passes the City Council on a six to one vote with Alderman Fisk voting no. All right. All right, we're going to move now to call the wards. All right, we're going to move now to call the wards. Alderman Rainey.
I will never sit here and allow myself to be attacked. Never, ever, ever, never. And quite frankly, I don't appreciate the city clerk chastising me for doing that. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Thursday, second ward residents are invited to come out to our regularly scheduled monthly ward meeting. We will highlight the Erie, we'll have a guest from Erie, which I just want to thank the mayor, all of our community partners, our former mayor, former director of Health Department, Vonda Thomas, and the, do not let me forget the family. It's right on the tip of my tongue. The family who funded.
Finnegan Foundation.
Thank you very much, the Finnegan Foundation, for all their support. Happy to announce that Erie just opened up their new half of the building, which doubles the capacity of residents that have the potential to be served. So we have a representative, we'll have a representative at our ward meeting, sharing that and answering community questions. In addition to that, Hattash will be there to answer, address concerns and questions about our property taxes, and then we'll have a presentation regarding the, I think it's the 1200 block of Pittner, so you're definitely welcome to come. And just on a personal note, and I, and it goes in terms of the tenor of our conversations, and I've talked about this before, I feel like somewhere along the way, we've lost our, somewhere along this discussion, we've lost our way in terms of how we advocate for our issues. And I definitely, I'm a big proponent for freedom of speech, but where I have to ask our residents to reflect a little bit more is when you take an issue as serious as race, and we bring it to the modern day times to argue a point on development. My personal opinion on that, particularly if you weave in the work of Dr. Martin Luther King, who fought for all human rights, right? Much, in my opinion, deeper than the subject matter that we're talking about right now. Dr. King fought, spoke out about the Vietnam War. He talks about the fact of blacks and how they fought on the front lines, and then they returned to this country, and they didn't have the same equal rights as the white soldiers. Ultimately, he lost his life in moving and advancing in effort. Where in the public discourse we compare that to a capital project here in Evanston, I struggle with. And so, again, I'm in full respect of advocating, but no more that I could relate a economic development or a public project to the Holocaust. I would respectfully ask that our residents think about that when they're advocating for their personal rights. And I would be more than happy, and I said that before when the Women's Club was here, I would love to meet and continue that conversation, and I would love to have an opportunity with the newly formed group advocating for the poor right. So I look forward to continuing that discussion offline, but I really have to say that because when we, when we reduce our conversations to those issues of rate that have deep, 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 deep pain and suffering as a part of our American history, to what we're going through now, it just doesn't balance out on my scale, so I had to make that point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wilson.
That was well said. Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. And no report.
Okay, Alderman Ru Simmons.
All are encouraged to attend our ward meeting this week, Wednesday, 7:00 PM, Room G300. Also, we have a new business. Please go and support Giro Planet Evanston. They have the best tacos in town. Check them out.
All right. Alderman Sufferton.
Just let people who are following the NICS organic proposal know that the joint meeting of the Plan Commission's Zone Board Appeals that was going to take place Wednesday, April 10th at 7:30 is canceled, and, because there's no agenda item, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ravel.
Yes, thank you. So in response to pleas from a number of residents, I would like to make a reference to the environment board, that they consider a proposal to phase out the use of gas and propane-powered leaf blowers and lawn mowers in Evanston. As you know, gas-powered lawn equipment is very noisy. In many cases, it exceeds the decibel limit, I believe, in our noise ordinance. And of course, there's a lot of air pollution from the emissions that are bad for the environment and bad for public health. Washington DC recently, just within the last few weeks, I believe, passed an ordinance, you know, banning or phasing out these, this equipment, and there are dozens of cities across the US that already do that as well. So I would encourage the environment board to look at the example from these other communities and see what we can do here in Evanston. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Alderman Ravel.
Before we go to executive session, can I ask an Alderman to make a reference? So today, we had an electronic, we had a citizen give electronic public comment. I'm asking for an Alderman to make a reference to the Rules Committee to come up with a process or completely eliminate, but I would hope a process to allow for electronic public participation. I believe Alderman Rainey shared an article recently that gave an example of municipalities across the nation that are allowing folks to attend through video chat. If we can come up with a, not suggesting that, but some method to allow folks to participate in public comment without having to, you know, always physically be here, I think that would be highly appropriate.
Just so I understand, are you suggesting that, for instance, if people just email you and say, "Hey, I can't be at city council, but here's my statement," can this be read?
No, just as if they were giving public comment here, if they're unable to attend, allow them to deliver public comment electronically. It's 2019, folks should be able to.
Is that not just what I, so, isn't that what I said?
No, it's not.
That they deliver and say, "I can't be here."
They wouldn't, I wouldn't read it. They would give their public comment, just as Mr. Vasilko did today, either through some medium, they'd give their own public comment from home or wherever they are.
Okay. Is there anyone that wants to move?
Just making a reference to rules.
Move that into rules?
Or I can continue to do it by phone the way we did it today.
All right.
If I could just.
Braithwaite.
Just to make sure that there's.
Right. I guess I'll take a little privilege, and I'll explain something you clerk Reed. And so for many of us who live in the community and move all around, our outreach to our residents is more than just the 45 minutes. I would tell you during the week, I would probably spend anywhere from four to five hours in community engagement, right? And so I respectfully ask you over the period of time, just like I advocated for you last week in the executive session, is that when you choose to exercise these new ideas, to give us the courtesy of letting us know. Because I have residents all the time, and I don't know if I can speak for everyone who would like for me to read things into public comment, who would probably love to call, and I don't know how we would dare manage that for the 45 minutes that the mayor just outlined. So, again, may not be able to speak for all of us, but I know my peers very well. We take phone calls all hours of the night, clerk Reed.
As do I.
We also answer emails all of, all hours of the night, probably anywhere from 50 to 100 a day, if not more. In addition to that, we all host our community ward meetings. We, people come to our houses to share how they feel, and then, I can't even tell you how many meetings I have in the grocery stores, right? So to introduce this, I think opens up a whole new nuance, particularly when just two weeks ago at our Rules Meeting, we were working to contain this in a manageable way that it doesn't interfere with our ability to do, you know, to wrap up meetings at a decent time for those of us that have jobs during the day. So I'm not going to support, you know, taking in phone calls when I know that I'm already engaging my community in a multiple of different ways, so.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did you want to add anything? Your light was on, and then I want to get to executive session and move on.
Yeah, I did, just really quickly. I, you know, in thinking about my job up here and our collective jobs, one of the nice things about meetings is that we do get together and we're able to look each other in the face and hear public comments, even though we're not supposed to respond to them. I'm a little concerned about the way, the way public discourse is progressing recently, which is people talking to one another basically in a bubble on Facebook or Twitter or wherever, on any social media. I think it's really important that we stress the value of actually being in the same room together. So I, I'm not going to get the same value from someone who phones in or where you read a letter as I am for someone standing here at the dais, talking directly to us. So I agree with, I agree with what you're saying. It certainly, we certainly can discuss it at Rules if somebody wants to do that, but I think it's a larger issue of how we're communicating and engaging each other as a community.
Thank you, thank you.
May I make a quick response?
Let's move, we're going to move on to executive session. No one wanted to move to committee. Alderman Wilson, can you lead us into?
Yes, thank you. Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel and litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A, C1 and C11.
Is there a second? All right, city clerk, could you take the roll to lead us into executive session?
Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
And Alderman Ravel.
All right. The Evanston City Council is going to recess into executive session. Thank you, everyone, for coming out.
I'm going to make a statement, Alderman Braithwaite, and anyone else who's in the room who can hear this. I think it is, well, then, I'm just sitting here talking, and folks can listen or not listen, but I think it is irresponsible to think that only folks who have our cell phone numbers and feel comfortable enough and can recognize us at grocery stores are the folks that should be able to reach out to us.